Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the public hearing?
Yeah.
And so let's do item 11, and we'll jump back into the... With that, Mike, you wanna come up? We're gonna have...
Motion to waive the...
Read it, and then I make a motion to...
Morning, Mike.
And we make a motion to waive the reading and the...
On the legal notice.
I make the motion to... Give me about a second.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye. You're on.
Mason's going back over the second reading. We have not received any complaints or anything as far as our office goes.
Do we get any that you're aware of?
We have not heard anything.
There anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this? I don't see any hands, so I saw it was camera.
I saw it was widely publicized in Screen Valley Times and Chicago Courier.
That's what I heard.
Got a half, got a full-page ad on... I think the public is aware of it, so...
We close the public hearing. The building department is requesting the board adopt the revised Jog County Building Fee Schedule, which includes permanent fees, contractor registration, and licensing fees to be effective September 26, 2016, pursuant to ORC 307.37.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you. I'll go to number one. I will report on financials I approved on August 17, 2016, Resolution 16-2007, which was pursuant to motion approved by the board on January 5 to allow me to do that. We had an appropriation transfer for the Care and Custody Fund, moving funds to salaries to cover payroll. We had a supplemental appropriation request for Care and Custody Fund for salaries and opers contributions for that payroll. And we... I approved a travel request for the Popeye Court. Okay, time for that.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of August 16, 2016.
For the move? Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
For the record, morning, Ann.
Good morning.
About the third or fourth time I've said that this morning, but we don't want general public to think we ignored.
You and Christie coordinated.
Yeah, everybody else sort of used their uniform of the day today. Apparently we got memo. Not telling everybody else that. Okay, in the financials this week, we have three supplemental appropriations. Two of them are for community development, one is for the revolving loan plan for other purchases and for the loans, and a supplemental appropriation for the county engineer for equipment. We have quite a few travel encumbrances this week. We've got one for the clerk of courts, for the Ohio Clerk of Courts Association meeting, one for the engineer's office, for the Professional Land Surveyors of Ohio seminar, four encumbrances for JFS, for their CFIS web users conference, one for juvenile court, for the CASA Fund for Training, one for the recorder's office, for the Ohio Recorder's Association Fall Conference, and one for the treasurer, for the Thompson Reuters Conference. Under the vouchers, we've got a payment to Runyon Faving for $240,336.54 for road resurfacing, and a payment of $17,563 for LGB Inc. for engineering and survey for the trunk vein sewer in Bay Bridge for water resources. Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-108, itemizing the financials for the meeting of August 23, 2016.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigle?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
About two or three months ago, we learned that our shredding company had been purchased by my nemesis, Iron Mountain, who immediately doubled our per-box charge for shredding. So we're like, no, we're not doing that. So we went out and solicited some quotes. The lowest we received was $2.75, and I called them up and said, can you do any better than that? Because I was paying $2, and we got them down to $2.50. Basically shredded paper's a commodity, and right now it's not worth very much. So that affects the amount that they can bring down their price. I thought $2.50 was pretty good in light of the guys that wanted four and five, so... And the guy, Info Shred, is a local company. The guy, the gentleman, lives here in Jogga County and wanted to work with us. So we're here to ask for you to approve a contract with info-shred... It's not .net, it's just info-shred.
No, it said .net on there.
No, on their contract, the paperwork said .net.
For $2.50 a box for shredding.
For the year...
It's not for the year 2016. There is no term in the contract, and we want that.
Just open in the month-to-month.
It's an open-ended contract. It's basically, they bill us, we pay them, for however many boxes they shred.
Okay, any questions?
The Archives and Records Center is requesting the board approve, execute, and initial the contract agreement with info-shred.net to perform onsite shredding services of retention expired records in the amount of $2.50 a box.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigle?
Thank you.
Thank you. I keep thinking of somebody.
Good morning.
Throw a box.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Morning.
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Okay, number five. First of all, I'm requesting the board reject all the submitted bids from the first bid that we did for the maintenance ADA entryway project under VA-15, as the bids came in over 10% of the estimate. So we're actually gonna go rebid after that. So we reject all bids.
Is this for these two doors here?
Part, that was part of the project. We had seven doors that we wanted to get done. So we put it all in the bid because the estimate covered it. So now what we'll do with the new bid is we will break it out into alternates. That way we can pick the doors that make, that work with the money.
Needed them all, or...
Yeah, we have higher priority. The highest priority is Board of Elections to us. So that's gonna be our main bid. And then we'll break out all the other doors as alternates, and we'll pick which ones to make.
Why would you... You might not be able to answer this, but is it the engineers or architects that are giving us, setting these prices? That are... Or is it the contractors who just have more work than they want to do, so they're bidding everything high?
I think it's a little bit of both. When you work with a grant, you're giving an estimate for now, but for a project a year later. So you can't, it's, I mean, some years, you go right on, we really don't have an issue. Some years this year, I guess it's an issue all around. Even according to the state, they said other communities are having the same problem. A lot of the bids are coming above estimate, and if it's above 10%, we have to go back out to bid. So you can't tell me if you don't have the money, you don't have the money. So it's a little bit of both.
Okay, thank you.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board reject all bids submitted for the Jog County Buildings and Grounds ADA door improvements under grant VA-15-101 as they exceed the estimate.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
The next one is to ask for permission to advertise for the second bid for that project.
To rebid?
Yes.
Formed a rebid.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to rebid the Jog County Buildings and Grounds ADA door improvements under grant VA-15-101 to be held on Wednesday, September 14, 2016, at 2:00 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on August 25, 2016, and on the Congress site.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Thank you. Good day.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question about that bid. Is, do you have any idea when you're gonna ask for the bids to be in? I'm from the Board of Elections. I'm the deputy director of the Board of Elections, and our absentee voting starts October 11.
It won't be done by then, there's no way. There's no way, the project won't be. I mean, that takes, it takes a long time to get a project going with the bid. You have to get the bid in, you have to get the contract and all that. So it'll be after October 11. The bids are due, I believe, on September 14?
Yes.
So the bids will be due on September 14. Once we get those bids, hopefully we'll get an acceptable bid offer, and then we can start the process from there. It takes about six weeks for them to order the hardware. So once we know which doorways they're doing, then they'll order. So that'll give you a little bit of a timeline.
Probably after the November election meeting.
We've always been inspected by the Secretary of State's office and the ADA Department. We haven't gotten a report back. I don't know if you people have. I mean, if they sent it to you directly.
Haven't seen it yet.
All I can tell you is, is that I know we don't comply. Because the gentleman that comes out is in a wheelchair, and he could not get in the doors. And so we're going to have a massive amount of people could be in some of those situations. And we could be dealing with the Department of Justice.
So let me ask you this question. So he can't get in because the door's not wide enough? Or he can't get in because somebody's opened the door for him?
The threshold is bad, the doors are too heavy, there's no capabilities for handicap accessibility. There's no opening of the doors.
It's been like this for decades.
Yes, I realize that.
And people have voted, and people have been voting in wheelchairs and so on and so forth. So unless the door's not big enough for him to get the wheelchair through it, I'm sure there's a way to accommodate people with disabilities as we're waiting to get the, whatever the formal, you know, door opening processes and all that kind of stuff. That shouldn't prevent people from voting, just because...
No, it's not gonna prevent people from voting. I'm just saying that there could be some handicap problems.
Okay, alright.
I mean, which we're trying to avoid, because, you know, if we're dealing with a lot of people, we can't be watching the door if somebody's out there struggling, you know? So that's why I was wondering, you know, when the bids will be open and when the process could start. So we'll have to try to figure something else out.
Yeah, nobody wants a bad situation. But let's, we've got what we've got. We're dealing with the speed of government here. And so the government is gonna sue us because the government can't respond? Then I think we need to, you know, take that into consideration and do what we gotta do. And so, you know, if we need to have somebody stand up there and open the door for people or whatever, I don't know what the answer is. But, you know, I think that we ought to be able to accommodate that. But it's government that created this problem and the process that they're using. And we gotta live with the process the government created, so unfortunately.
Right.
Let us know if there's anything we can do to help, because we shouldn't have wanted to make sure the voting process goes smoothly and nobody's denied a vote and all that stuff.
Right, right.
I'll volunteer to show up all day and open the door.
Okay, well, we put you down.
Wait a minute, did I say that out loud? That was my outside voice?
Be a greeter.
Be a greeter, be a vote greeter. Can I wear a button that says "Vote for..."
No, none of those, we can't do any...
Unless you got 100-foot-long arms.
Yeah, right.
You can open that door from 100 feet away, you can wear anything you want.
A long hook to pull the door open. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you hear anything, let us know.
Uh-huh, we will.
Yeah, I'm sure. Sure. Morning, Joanie.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
This is just a, a letter of response to the state for the audit that they performed on the Water and Sewer Grant for the Thompson sewer project. And some excess funds were ordered in, and we didn't need them. And the state told us not to return them until they told us to return them. So we waited until we heard from them, and they came out and audited and said, "Well, you have all this money, they didn't return, so we're fine." So, I don't know. So I'm just asking you to sign the letter so we can say to them, we sent the money back.
Okay. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of board to execute a letter of response to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services, in regards to monitoring grant BW-13-101, residential public infrastructure grant.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigle?
Aye.
Thank you.
My state.
Well, thank you, you too.
Hello, Jerry.
Good morning.
Why didn't you send that money back? Why didn't you send that money back?
No, that was, that was the money for the connections, the people, the low to moderate income connections from right away to the buildings. We used our portion. That we needed, so... The first two items here are just some revised job descriptions for engineering technician and design engineer position. I mean, part of my review of the, of our department and Commissioner Spiller's comment, we've been looking at doing more engineering work in-house. So the job descriptions have been adjusted to make it more towards design and AutoCAD use and such, so we can then go out for advertising. That'll be on next weekend, next week's agenda, for going out to advertise for a design engineer, start doing some of the engineering in-house. When I did the evaluation, it more or less over the next three years came out to be a wash between us doing the work in-house versus hiring an engineering firm out, from outside. They come in and do the work, but there's more work than just design, you know, and design of projects that these two individuals could do to help the department. We could do more, do even more in-house by having the engineer and design engineer and engineering technician doing some of the stuff that our maintenance guys are doing right now that would free up our maintenance guys to do more, construction work within the department. So we can get additional benefit that way.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for the position of engineering technician number 2304 to be effective August 23, 2016. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for the position of design engineer number 2305 to be effective August 23, 2016.
Now, 10 goes along with those, doesn't it? Does 10 go along with that, with the revised org chart?
I can add 10 in there. The revised org chart is just adjusting a couple of job descrip, job numbers that were mislabeled on previous charts and adjusting the construction inspector, the title on the org chart to match the job description.
And then when do you think this will get closed in that?
The design engineer will be going out next Friday. If it's approved, if it gets approved next Tuesday.
Okay.
And, you know, he'll be going out next Friday.
Okay.
So the Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart correcting the job title and vacant positions to be effective August 23, 2016.
I'll make those three motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Thanks for taking that, that just quickly as you took care of it, too. Yeah, like I said, it was some, one of the things that was on my list of review is I, it's amazing. I've been the director for a year now. It doesn't seem like it's, in some ways it seems a lot longer, in other ways it seems shorter. But, yeah, it was one of the things that was on my eventual thing to look at, to just bump it up.
Yeah, I think it's a good move forward, so.
I think it'll definitely be a benefit to the department.
Yeah, thank you.
You're kind of in the end, owns the rest of the board meetings. Yeah, oh, no, 11 we did. That was the hearing, yeah. I thought you weren't following along.
Everybody's leaving.
All the good stuff is over. This is just the dry, rice that's left in the pot.
Morning there.
Good morning. I'm surprised we're not roomful of people.
Just not captivating enough, I guess, so... I have about eight items on the agenda today. This is our first resolution to improve several roads throughout Jogga County, as well as do the permanent pavement markings for 2017. First batch of projects are all locally funded, includes Nelson Road, County Highway 2, sections A through C, which is the entire portion of Nelson Road in Jogga County. The second road is Thompson Road, County Highway 7, sections F through H, which is from State Route 528 to the Ashtabula County line. County Highway 13, Chardon Windsor, from 608 to 528. And County Highway 37, Clay Street, sections M and N, from Thompson Road to the Lake County line. And finally, the last level project is the permanent pavement markings for 2017. Those five projects are all locally funded and in our budget. And this is the first resolution to authorize my office to begin the field work in preparation of the plans. It will come back near the end of the year, first part of next year, to ask for approval.
Okay, I think we can probably do these all together. We'll test the system's ability. The next job is auctioneer.
These three here are your next three early-year art collections, those are on you. So we'll do 12 through 16, and then those are the... The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-109 to approve Nelson Road CH2, sections A through C, in Parkman Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-110 to improve Thompson Road CH7, sections F through H, in Thompson Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-111 to improve Chardon Windsor Road CH13, section C through H, in Claremont and Huntsburg Townships. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-112 to improve Clay Street CH37, sections M through N, in Thompson Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-113 to improve various sections of county roads by applying pavement markings for the year 2017.
I'll make those motions. I'll second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigle?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. The remaining three projects are all slated for Ohio Public Works grant funding. The local district committee has reviewed the slate, and these are tentatively approved for, they've been recommended to the final committee for approval for 2017. They include County Highway 3, Clareton and Troy Road, sections F through H, that runs from 322 to 608. Auburn Road, section P, which runs from Wilson Mills to Thwing. And County Highway 39, Mulberry Road, sections A through D, which is from the Coyoka County line to State Route 306. Finish that entire road for a two-year project. Again, these are the first resolution to give us the authority to complete our preparations in the lands.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-114 to improve Clareton and Troy Road CH3, sections F through H, in Clareton and Huntsburg Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-113 to improve Auburn Road CH4, section P, in Thompson Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-116 to improve Mulberry Road CH39, sections C through D, in Chester Township.
I'll make those motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Gentlemen, ma'am, thank you.
I'm Jay.
She, can you go back and look at your resolutions? These three had two names on one line.
Okay.
Just waiting to adjust them. I fixed it, but his name was...
Oh.
And one of them had, and one of them had the name of the day.
Okay.
So they're all fixed. So just so you know what you're on.
$2.50 just to shred this stuff.
For a whole box?
Unfortunately.
I'm not sure we won't have a whole box by the time it gets...
Those don't get shredded.
Was it permanent?
That was something that I changed when I got here, because we discovered that not all of them had dropped into the journals. And started keeping the paper.
Now, I heard something different from Linda than we heard from another agency, which is that she says that the paper isn't that, the price isn't that good right now, or something, right?
The price for selling shredded paper.
Shredded?
Yeah. The shredders take the paper away and they sell it, and that helps balance the cost of the shredding. And the guy, the guys have told me that the price of that right now is very, the lowest it's been in 10 years, so...
Well, I only say that because we hear from the solid waste disposal plant that that's where the money is, is in the fiber of the paper.
They do lie.
What little money there is. Yeah, I was gonna say that both those statements could be true, which means the other stuff must be worth nothing. It's because the federal government's flooding the market right now with paper.
Shredded or otherwise.
Look to me like you're flooding the market with paper air. Starts up here, you know? Blame Christie.
Not this paper. This paper's not going anywhere. Maybe the archives eventually. I have a box like you. I have multiple years in that box.
Well, we're paying $2.50. If anything's being destroyed, we're paying $2.50 a box, so you don't want you standing on that. So ways like...
Their, their box of their, their junk mail, after a year, it's a rolling bag.
That could be some wiggle room. We could get a bigger box. If you wet, if you wet the paper.
Bigger box that stands on it.
Yeah, get a great, like refrigerator box or something, and that's $2.50.
It's like a brick of lead.
Can we get one more? Give Blake a little chance to catch up here. And then the fair meeting at what time?
It's at 10. We did the fair meeting at 10.
Coming up, getting done.
That's right. Are you gonna be here until 3:00? You're the chair.
Yep, I'll be in.
You will?
So, I don't know whether you heard the story or not, but one of the kids that vandalized at the fair dropped a cellphone. Made it a lot easier to...
Made it a lot easier to track down the rest of the kids. His mom called to find out where his cellphone was, and so they asked a whole bunch of questions and discovered who the whole team was.
Are they done with all of them?
What's that?
Are they done with all of them?
I don't know if they're done or not, I, I was talking to Phil Phillips, or Bob Phillips the other day, he was telling you that.
Did they, what did they vandalize?
Everything.
Just a bunch of buildings, just a bunch of buildings, they destroyed a bunch of stuff.
Both of them test twenty.
Twenty thousand bucks, yes.
Broke a bunch of light fixtures.
Well, that was the first time, that was the second time they went back to date.
Yeah, that was my point, yeah, it was not like, it was some, they weren't stealing something, they were just in there being malicious.
Who doesn't need a fire extinguisher?
Yeah. When, and it's part of the sad thing, part of the, there's some 4H kids involved, and of course they're now, they bought an expensive bowl and bar steer, and they're not going to be allowed to bring it in.
Last year, from what I understand, it's the Donald Trump, what they did was, they made, they have some of these.
They should.
So, they basically just ruined the car.
Yeah. I'm sorry for the delay here.
It's alright, I gave you lots of paper, it's fine.
Yeah, just, help me out here.
Still think we should come up with a stamp, you know, one of those, I don't know, whatever they call them, you know, security.
He persists in making a signature, illegible, that's part of the problem. Well.
I bet I don't look the same as I did when we first started.
I told you about that. You used to have to sign over 400 and some contracts. As board president, you had to sign all the contracts for the teachers, the football coaches, the bus drivers, everything, you sign your name, put it over here, just keep signing until what you were doing didn't look like the first one you did, then you take a break.
Alright.
Yep.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board move into executive session to consider the possible dismissal of a public official.
So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer? Aye. Commissioner Spudler? Aye. Commissioner Claywell? Aye. Do you want me in there too? And we expect action?
Um, I would expect some sort of action.
Yep.
Okay, we're back from our executive session, at what time is it?
I have 10:42.
10:42. And no action at this time, so we'll, I move to the.
I'm a juror.
Move to the jury, there you go. We're a juror.